One hundred. Thirty over the five. Over. We're gonna be models here, we're models.
Yeah.
See mine in there. I see you. There. Let's do it. Here, let's do this.
Yeah.
You. You're not positioning any screening. I get that. So please go. Now this video party is available for the votes. The first item on agenda for us consideration is. It is for the available holding game total sixteen. Regular work in source sixteen twenty five certainly. For publishing. Uh, why any of the steroids around is there are those. Those.
So. Then.
Set. Thank you. Saturday all the papers they are.
That.
Uh, sure proof. Next item on the agenda is our public comments. This is very long, this is a republic, so you dress and go to work on top everything. Jurisdiction. But it's not listed in another issue on agenda. You might have seen him, you know, is this general excuse, we still be agenda with call, we'll give you excuse to see then. Your manners, I mean, sentence him at least I was told, you might just remove that there, so we can speak. Anyone who wants to speak should go out and speak with the marshals located at the side and side in front of. Room. To get them. This is a public practice, this is a tent, this is an opportunity. On to those who are. Listen to what we say, but this will not narrow the topic of special edition volumes. If the program is ready to go with change of shift for some of the rest of the days to later day. All speakers will be eliminated three minutes. If they're all strictly in course, this rule per our standing staffs in all how we're concerned for three minutes. To request that all speakers respect the civil with the. And then he asked that all members of the training department may get any comments during after speaker. Finally, you can be sure to speak directly to my problem to ensure that they're going. Here we go. With that, either again, um, agenda is thought. Um, and I'm signing. Uh, Mr. Shield. My other. Well.
Thank you. Yes, I really like to remind the trustees today of a few of the comments, the YouTube video from the Glendale favorable community forum of the man and then. On October eighth of last year. About an hour eleven minutes in the video, President Rome talks about not building a whole point of the food taxes if the referendum is passed. Well, ten and a half months after people took effect, the grocery tax has been renewed. Now the residents are considering home rule food and beverage tax and home rule savings tax. I'm not exactly sure when we reach off the whiteboard, we certainly seem to be headed in that direction. In addition, these new home rule taxes don't seem to be an empty and probably tax deduction. Probably taxes that goes for twenty twenty six, I'll find out to the detail limit they're going to go ahead and pull. But shortly after President Rome's talk, the oil comment. He said that it would be, quote, oh, it would be wonderful to find a way to tax somebody to help us that isn't one of residents, unquote. Previously, before chief financial officer Nicky Larson. Had a suggestion to implement a sales tax that could apply to agencies that attract, quote, a lot of folks among the two. Oh, such as writers' theater. However, it's the, however, the new home rule tax will be discussed today. Excuse me, I see no theater pay tax being hoped. And to make rent management work because writer theaters are a problem. The sixteen dollar per glass French bed though, the folk of out of town zooming writers theater is exempt from your home rule food and beverage. And not only is Glendale not following the chief financial officer Larson's suggestion to tax the agencies that attract live folk to the one town. But the Glendale community grants program is actually giving our tax money to writers' theaters to enable full down. The out of town folks ticket prices. Finally, at about an hour twenty minutes in the video. The village manager stated that sixty to seventy percent of writers' theater paid for the part of outside Glendale. These residents will pay a theater ticket tax, will not pay the new home food tax writers' theater, will not pay the new home food better tax writers' theater. But will have their ticket subsidized by the tickets, but it's taxed. Maybe.
Thank you. Okay, appreciate your share. No, sorry, we've all. Okay. That's most. All. Next. In agenda. Is a proportion. It. I think of a person, uh, they were. They have a whole. I reported it just now into a whole meetings. But it was all. Most especially. So specified. So there's that time. So I write about the chairman's finance and proportion. Ruby's there and.
Thank you. Uh, and I remember a team meeting. They scattered well. By October. The general public performance for none of the villages for others versus exceeded both of all the public private and higher receipts would be. You know, pizza tax for showing the parking fees. And the cities and super. Uh, we spent some time discussing the fact that, uh, as a board of tax receipts. For the second storm bills, uh, was posted online. And they had a date, December fifteenth. They discussed the goods and that's with the book of cat transfer. From general fund debt service, um, that's on the campus tonight. From the village's annual debts of. Second one of the year principal bank stuff for the second part. Uh, as we will have to be tax money in. From our residents coming in, coming to us in signs for where's they pay. Uh, that transfer of data will be first when taxes come in with. Um. The debt service candidates, uh, the bottom debt or. Or beyond boss, also with the next. The committee also discussed the proposal on the next agenda to change from the group reactions by the basis. Move by the office system. And as we were about short, it's home rule. It was now I see the beginning of the start. It is also good. Yeah, to streamline the budget process will need several frankly unnecessary seeing selves. Of the process. But the autism system will replace the traditional process that is in place now. But rest assured, it will still require all the presentations and expectation. For the village's budget each year ago, less information will look out for otherwise made available of. About our living costs and what was spending, what's. Uh, lastly, the committee also discussed the list of proposed potential donation. From the public safety foundation. Which will be further refined and presented to the foundation inspiration. When being ungraceful on the sixth, maybe replace with the public safety resident. It is ready to use in Co Beach. Um. And most important in there, frankly, the committee. Trust me, for all of us here are extremely grateful to the foundation and their love to. The generous. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Work. Next one tomorrow. And our, um, as supposed to be.
Thank you, thank you, President. The plan commission met last night to continue our discussion on the development of the plan you did. Plan unit development, also known as P U D ordinance, which was a recommendation of the comprehensive plan. This was the third meeting at which we discussed the P U D ordinance and this month's discussion focused on when you were about P U D process. Which allows flexibility in development standards in return for development providing benefits to the village should be allowed or required. The commission gave direction to the planning team about the need to make sure that all future development villages, commercial districts. Meet high standards for design and discuss several options for how P U D ordinance could help achieve this goal. The planning team will begin writing a draft ordinance over the next month. And the goal, with the goal of having the commission renew our first draft in our January meeting, thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you. On Tuesday, and while golf season is over, say, the half of the golf season. Remember, we had a golf season with ongoing structure in September, all facilities. October was a great, which revenue city budget by fifty percent. Rounds to pass budget of eighteen percent staffs was given. That are exposed to. The experiment is ongoing, so the apartment will be a straight north apartment, not suspected. We gather a large form of our management system in place. We're going to installation, your kernel system, steel rust and process of being installed. Where the building will continue over the winter and the goals they have building. I think clothes has A D S and the cruise inside. That is.
He's saying they.
Yeah.
There's a. Bill. There's a. Parking. The hills. We do. No. East. So around here. Uh, national tour is safe. That's where we can throw the.
Thank you, President. The click of family. That I'm looking. At the meeting, the task. The neutral high school dude. Design and gate due to this and a center of both is sustainable. That was the word with the high school student to set up a meeting that school discovered. The task was off the game planning, uh. Twenty forty six donated a cycle power, right? The schedule of May ninth. Six. The task was awful, bad communications happens, uh, through the end of this year. Task force partners will be planned by. Posted its third annual Saturday at that, they were worth paying beach. Down to the west energy university. And so this is. Our mistake in who could I suppose, I'm above. But telescopes. And, uh, so that the penny could view moon, the star, Saturn, and various little stars. It was a deal with the night as anybody. But suddenly my people order that 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 staff was feeding is too big.
Thanks for that work. Our news. I would feel.
Thank you, President. Uh, Glendale was. And immediately and third to discuss the community accountable. The council of gateway with neighborhood initiative and share a lot of this is combat unity. And more information as the schedule sent out and has developed. Uh, the council also discussed how possible donations are. Shaming them in fourteen residents were asked to bring in. Change of costumes to be distributed to children that skirt your, uh, little for twenty four, holiday twenty six. Uh, this was also initially carried with this group thirty five. Um. Finally, the council prepared. Activities and, uh, supporting the level of public library in a sensory. And, uh, the council sponsor also rest of the summer first, uh. Uh. The next item is the D C S.
Thanks for that work. The next two reports are written. Preservation condition so.
Thank you. It's going to go through. And it says, proposed up these to the drink of the rich ordinance standard. Some of these vicious are necessary requirements. Those extreme lighting that awarded by Chicago. Mission trees initiative. Close on survival, more than. The commission also says offense to hands protection for final when you have a tree. Stand up updates on several. Initiatives, especially the small tree planting program. Which added ninety three new carpings. And fall collegiate collection program please. Additional reports covered. But for world that is sort of very sensitive. And Congress. Um. If they join tree nursery. Being. Artist. There also will be some additions. So. The clay. Also discussed outreach and education and moving forward to. Who sponsoring some. No business sustainability. You should. Actually. Me. Separated. Of. Mission. Four. Four. Sit. The preservation commission discussed the problems on the incentive of funding to. Transformation of the station. Of private facility homes. The commission discussed the votes incentive for. Then operate one time full air table and raise for both third and last. And also landing room. Then there's kind of that, it holds the winding and sadness to cities to reduce the goals. And ensuring that any improvement. Anything in that ability. People care. Then. Are they need something that says. You can transmit it to the somebody. Shouldn't it means their December. Up here. Here. Then it's going to be. Seven for super time.
Thank you. Where. Uh. It's. It is. National. Of officers and. Anderson's reports all heard over.
Thank you, President. Good evening, everyone. Uh, this is a point of surprise for this evening. Uh, first is wanted to get a brief, um, regarding stand of our trade from, uh, issue we reported on last moment. Were getting through for the last several. Um, and they, it's a, for us, we have been working fully with the union senate real room and. Um, and I'm glad to say that we have, um, a solution for. The administration. Um, unfortunately, it's said that for open shutdown has impacted time. We're creating more, um, those non-dual employees who were on. It is to catch up with their, uh. Email and other communication and we have an contact with them and they are. They're working as quickly as they can to get back to us, but the good business of these facts. Like what was thrown by. Rules, uh, will be maintained. Uh, so just about one major I made out. I have them okay. It hasn't been known since, uh, we were here five weeks ago. That's thanks to my fellow. Working closely with us and we are continuing to do everything we can. As I said, to make sure that those store. By and through. Was. Uh. New basis. Uh, it is a deep season, um, even though we're going to be, you know, from the winter, um, are any of them. In program as well, okay. Uh, who is far away. They, um, expected to continue to so. The summer, um, our website is updated daily, provide information where there's. Um, but lately, it hasn't been the way fall and, um, are trying to catch up, um. Beings actually support me. And freeze and, um. Many of the men in yours, uh, as everyone is a catch up. We have also extended the little you get for people who are two additional weeks. Who moved to seven fourteen. That is a history. Activity that, um, I was requested on. And so we have done that, um, and, uh, the little days that. You know, we use it through seven fourteen. Uh, and finally. Third. Has been very successful, uh, the last moment it is to replace that. The third is the next month. We're. Uh, the program will resume again, uh, this springs. Uh, thank you, everybody who has participated in, thank you for all first part, so yeah, yeah. Uh, we are, uh. The Thanksgiving holiday and just a reminder, village offices are closed Thursday and Thursday, Saturday, Sunday. And Friday, November fifth, eighth. Uh, for the Thanksgiving holiday, Thursday and Friday, which in the cycle of collections will be delayed for Monday. Uh, and in addition, uh, in the operating employee appreciation. Our. Those offices will close in twelve thirty. Friday. Uh, and then look, that's the bond to remind you that the mass ride. Yeah. Uh, the car are linkable. Will be again below and beautifully spread the winter months. Um, there are hundreds of thousands of energy efficient building units in the district. And other, I don't think of first. It's been amazing job and various, I didn't see those like that. Um, thirty next Friday, um, that event, the brunts provided in the second. The light is getting later. I'm reading the word, uh, we will be abandoned friendly activities, preparation brides. Here we agree live and the community holiday for that. Um, which is what I'm doing, uh, who were we figure. Uh, so we encourage everybody to come out with life, for our businesses and obviously that makes. It is a holiday, I've seen them, so please do continue to shop local, um, and especially do so on static. And just all of the static. Again, some of these sound which is dangerous, red and beige. There, as we all know, the community of small businesses, people and retailers. You know, really react, we need to support and meet and people. All right. Holidays, uh, remember shop with her when you do so, uh, internet. What? And it's been. Uh, it's important to stores to speed there at reservations and. I'm excited, um, and. Today is the contest. And it was my work.
Last year, where. Where was I about to go? Um, the national everybody shared with those residents, or we have. Which is there is. It's for the people here, uh, in six places. Uh, this is not new. I am where the political word of, um, repeat strike process. Uh, there was a, uh, polling in the. Uh, it's. Rather than each of. Uh. Where we facing the problem for essentially contributions from builders. And that, uh, K A regulations. Um. The regulations are within budgets, this, uh, that the policies. Sir, the finance committee. Um, and it's, uh. Every kinds of mission. Um. The organizations, uh, which bill is restricted to four and. Her. Forget this year, um, these organizations that. Evil case, uh, are, uh. Public buildings and. Yeah. I'm done. So. And it describes the Glendale forty thousand dollars. When the sorrows says thousand five hundred dollars. Which. I have a good thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. But the service of sixty thousand dollars. And writers. Forty thousand. Again, one of our old meetings, one of our respects did, uh. Great ways to say that you thought was. Inappropriate spending. Those. Business. Uh. And. Just simply want to say, I respect, we disagree. Each of these contributions are organization, things are good village. Some days things. They're doing things that you might not. Better. But just try. Um. Supreme, I guess, see I'm writers here. It's been. If I can, then normally it's been. Those time to the same area of color. Or they did, they called us, they go from residents. So it's like. This is good, he knew about it, uh, like, so I think, uh. Where does it be to anything and cross gate. That's the only item I have. Do we need a, do we need a voice call about this? I don't think so.
It's serious. Because it's a good. So I didn't show you any of this.
Okay. It's all. Local surprises. Uh, next item. The agent. Check me. Who's I. I'm speaking. Even the. Product workers initially work together to build a bold strategy. You don't think they want any. Heard about discussion, uh, if there. Also.
Um, back.
It's been looped, second, who is speaking, roll off of good. Round.
Yeah. As we all gets in front of the new law.
Yeah.
As the. Yes. Yeah, because he ruled, yes, that's his path.
Yes.
Next, by. In this way, rotations. Say goodbye. Once. Once we are. The. Which can you should see about the national change first. Separation of the organs and the little street out, bunch of officers. So. That's true, largely picked out. I'm.
I really need you. Uh, this part of the state works to monitor the national paralysis, then we also. Uh, Sam is currently in the transition for big corporations to, to a lot of the office services. I remember maybe you want to ask a little. They will function. Trust you, man, you know, earlier, this is trying to be. Today. Still require possession of related in profession and also, um, we're. Little noted prior to. You remember that as well. Tending to you. Uh, but in the stream, I can remember how I'm going to. Ask for that one of the angle partners that I did. Do today. To find the new dating or at first coming for greater than. Uh, and then the process great warrior is eating is. The. It was the. Concern. Um, and then the officer we had to find a great. And. Got me. Then we are most actually with a great. Anywhere first we said. Because of the. January. And we are. Do create approval of a. Perpetual Florida tonight. Um, very. Be fine hearing, uh, just to close down the group here. I may answer any questions.
The trustees have. But not. The girl going to. Who people. Especially. By the.
So.
This better so fire. Uh. Okay. Um. So. At the office.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. During. All of them. The. Yeah. Always during. Um period. Welcome. The. Uh. Are a security from I associated button. Oh yes. Are the. Last. Super saying shut all.
Sir, um.
Oh, um so. So let me. The job that plus. But. He vote on your area. And now I'm going to start with your phone. Village manager. You're much.
Well, thank you. Here we are to serve just a brief discussion of paper. Orders and we have rest to see.
Thank you, Deputy Larson. Good evening. The annual appropriations ordinance is required by L to stand new and it's not for the leading funding authority for the. Here. It's based on the calendar year. Six buttons that was compromised by the village board at the October fourteenth by X committee meeting. This set toward the mass legal funding admit, which is that in a hundred percent of the line item budget. This is not compatible with personal policy, this is just on the air funding. And all the villages contract and spending here in the local areas, this budget was still going to the. The total provision ordinance is seventy seven million nine hundred nine three thousand fifty dollars. The breakdown of the friendship. Five funds on the screen and you can see in the left column, this each part of budget and then recount that the four is on the appropriation. In accordance with the standard we've established, most of us here in Chicago, so in. Well. And the details of the appropriations ordinance made by your category on page twenty. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the budget ordinance. The budget process has been a lot uh since the beginning, all the way back in May this year. We reviewed the annual policy that the July. Meeting and then continued the discussion of the five year financial forecast, which is included in the budget. Uh at this September my ass. The meeting. At the October fourteenth by the committee meeting, there's. Beginning of the operating track budget by departments. As well as review of the ten year community investment program and the property tax law. The total budget as presented this evening is fifty two million seventy nine thousand one hundred forty five dollars revenue. And fifty eight million four hundred thirty nine thousand two hundred dollars expenditure. The village does have a balanced budget and the inventory requires some margin because of the planned use of reserves. And in accordance with the village's one balance policy, we do allow ones. Thing on single capital investments, which are being invested into the community, and so that's why the expenditure is to be our own. Looking at some of our operating. All of them. The operating review succeed the operating funders, which are the sustainability of this budget through twenty twenty six and the app. Included in pension funds, the number two increases to fifty eight million three hundred forty six thousand five hundred five hundred thousand. And revenue and sixty three million forty thousand four hundred five dollars. But sure. The reason we have right of pension fund is because the pension fund are largely controlled by statute and the village under control. The one time use of reserves for capital is because of the budget on the string. Uh by fun, the general fund is planned to draw to twenty two million dollars capital expenditures. Um. Wait anymore. Um the motor field tax fund was the dollars two hundred thousand. The golf fund drawn out. Draw is two point three million dollars. The capital fund drawn in was served in fifteen point two. Which largely is attributed to the golf golf renovation. And the water fund drawn out was served as one way. The ten year community investment program, which is included in the budget, is a total of ninety two point one million dollars in planned reinvestment into the community and the infrastructure. With nineteen point five million dollars proposed in the calendar year twenty twenty six budget. A large portion of that is related to the golf renovation. The village is planning on issuing twenty six of the ten point four million dollars with bond improvements of streets, sidewalks, doors, and. And what? This next slide is a summary of the budget ordinance by file. Started with the left column, moving to the right. This shows the projected bond balance is added December thirty first of this year. And then twenty twenty six revenue, operating expenses. And then the operating. Show each one is in line with the village's balance as policy. The common rent shows the one time capital expenses are transferred from each font. The far right side, so the projected run balance at the December thirty first of twenty twenty six. Involve with the plan, the general balance would add in there with thirty six point four percent of operating expenditure. Which as well actors of the village's one mail policy. Again, as the plan, the water fund at the year with a hundred. Twenty two percent of the operating expenditure. And that is how we have financially responsible budget this evening. The details of the budget ordinance will be found in page about page two thirty one. Thank you.
Question is awesome. The next item is consideration of the tax. We're attached to twenty twenty five. It's me glad that in twenty twenty six. The village will have hearing on most tax day with two sixteen following review of the committee their September eighteen. We. Uh the total of the lobby is in accordance with the. Force committed to continue to buy by top of whether the total status or amount. This year's tax levy does like for two point nine percent increase in the. I think I will extend the match year, which is based on. All of them. Yeah, I um. The total village money is being that. Um because that is excluded from the total calculation is thirteen six hundred place of the thousand. Two hundred and twenty five dollars then to be studied. Um as we discussed and our returns will be hearing also. The uh. Tell me to include your growth and you to pay. This year of building permit and. And so actually my feelings is. You know, hundred percent. And well, I am staying this, you know, these big forty or two thousand. I'm. Be fixed up. Very. The next item on the agenda is. The whole sale task consideration on hardly little calendar years I need to stay solid. Stay I don't know I have. Pretty costume that I wish. Supply chain issues, labor materials. Across many areas of our allocation, which led us to investigate alternative sources of revenue. Um homeless stats have been attractive for us and the advice that the willing to discuss this, but also around. Emergency town um we are. The queen here, we have paid for the day. Which also helps customers that I have been through our sweet shit. In the need for the. The debt into property tax will be. The whole stuff specifically, we have. They're everything, they're very important fashion. Um one of it. Being kind of with the vehicles. Um food, drugs and. This is what now we have. That we got. Um we would like to. Personalized fold in within it's of the little bank of. Um the department coming uh for everybody there and yes, it could be an option. Sales task. Let's say it was move all the tasks to start July first, we do have to adapt it by April first, we need to make this. The twenty twenty six budget doesn't include a pass limit for a half a year or. Task. Uh why we're feverable tonight. And the. Will be. Answer any questions on this task. The next item on the agenda is consideration of. We're feeling our P D S grade. Said in acting. You understand. Um similar to the whole no sales tax. With. And to the village with the wealth by. To. We want to. This is a pay for. Um this could reveal the. This day is creating tax. Is that um reactive of one percent over here. Um. That was taken active in January twenty twenty first, I'm sorry, January twenty one. Give it a chance. Ability to reveal tax. You know, if we got this number to allow us to draw they have or wish that has. So this one applies in any prepared coverage. In the village in initiative and this package letter. Is what all the lights and stuff. While it was this.
To do just for purposes of this, oh, dear, it's everybody. The statement B that director whatever was made is red up. By whether the losing to nothing. There's a line in the organization on your agenda that. That um indicated it's only consumption of low price. We've brought in the movie that I mean that was our initial. And it included data. So if you are applying to improve. Um in the obvious that in the. So it indicated um this particular item, I think, is. G. Um we would suggest you can G as in.
Fair enough. Um we have the only one. So this can change. And hopefully prepare for the being directly asked questions and send out to the business that will be affected. Change of call. Let me discuss the. Hearing tonight. Um if the taxes approved, moving to that community center ever was rare power to anyone. He impacted this change uh as it does the given week from the categories to push this task. Um similar. Almost seven years. Or this expanded task that we have. Budget um in this task approved not yet, the change would take like January first twenty twenty. And it over shoes.
Thank you, Deputy Larson. And part of the element budget process that aim for experience based by the chart is for all the services. The calendar twenty twenty six budget includes. Fees to fees. I don't know, we think you know. These are also found in the act of reporting by X committee. Waterway is increased by seven times, which is the line of the waterway. The watering column is adjusted to a. For the late. In distribution of the operating and. Operating. Then to reduce rates for entry to be able to possibly demand it made by the best policy. Nation. And the call was. Give me about that program. Schedule official share improvement over the next years. Uh the general collection term will be increased by two point nine five. Which is since we follow on changes yet. The building permits were. But probably increase from eight dollars twenty five cents to nine hundred per square foot. Alarm permit are being eliminated and fees are increasing for multiple alarms. The golf hub rates for the driving range. Brings fees and seat are increasing and they're about to to reflect the damage present. Annual fees are increasing and are aligned with community spots. Uh annual new year block increments are increasing from two hundred to three hundred. And quarterly year. For Mr. And you see. Part of my. Section heard to apply the party ordinances that are placed. Suddenly, the assignment. All of the violation should be. Related to some of the new fees that we're. Uh this part of me will be having on first starting. Six of the base new. This fragment will lie in standard municipal. Practically ensure that general operation. Visual. Uh the public works department, leaving the village's street opening permit fees. And it is required. On all street openings. And introduce to new paper that are H two. So I'm I'm you in uh in every speed. These modifications are intended. Would you feel cost to newly restart or retrieve or husband? Ensuring that the effects pretty much are not. Not one of the. The detail of all is increased. This will be found before next. We still have any more. And we have the answer in my school. Thank you.
Last name, no more special. Uh the Latin. The agenda remains. To bring up new taxes for Washington. Service area protection. Uh this special service area was created in. And was created to pay for private. And. Rifle. Uh it is self administered to the village. Um the home. In the special service. Replus that has been paid is uh you know, about different cares. Divided equal. Decided. Um and how we would do that is. A. Phil's turn really um. Tracing annual associated with this cost. Year twenty thirty. Twenty five thousand seven hundred fifty. Um if approved, this agenda I have to be. Put something twenty five times funding and we assess. All the properties. And. Includes second of our. I'm going to say there's one more comment I think. Uh I'm earlier. Um. The only entity that. Will be um. For a our partner of own agency, so. And so. In the case that is um. Sheer. First. So. Deep and whatever. When this has wouldn't. Have any useful questions?
For the work. As a question to read all theories of lead up. See if there are public. Through a volunteer. If. Of the guard. You remember the rules about reasons.
Thank you for taking the time. Uh my name is Brandon. I'm a resident of the big forever people. Um this one the comment definitely leads to the. That is because. Um not privately, you could be opposed to it, but I'm going to explain um the context of. And what is presented and what's on the neighboring uh. And it's or. So. Um. In terms of all discussed. Dear field. But overall, when we go, we consider uh will mention it is that or mentioned in the location. As being uh your victim that had. For the. Um we have a location in. We have a location in in. Um there is a reference. Um there are accounting liquor taxes. Um. That impact when the food is paid. So as it stands right now. Even though I had a one percent overall liquor tax. Um. The length goes. Cost of helping door to a consumer buy a bottle of Tito's is still three and a half percent higher than a consumer buying a bottle. Comparatively, that consumer is still paying four and a half percent more in the income than if they would buy the bottle of beer. So to put it in context, I know there are other taxes that we have to select and admit. But the cocaine liquor tax is not a good tax that does impact the consumer payment. So in terms of what's being discussed and how it's being presented, I know it's one percent, you know. As it's. Been as it's been drawn up right now um. We go at the moment is still, like I said, I mean, three and a half percent higher than Highland Park with that tax. And that doesn't even account for if the whole little tax, um, is enacted on the line first, the number would be even greater. So just wanted to throw that out as something to consider as it's written, um. Have been answering what's the.
Thanks for your comments. And. Well, thank you. Okay, are there any other? We're a bit about other age or always comments. Oh, period. Both. People. So if there are. Oh.
So.
There's a second. Okay. All fair. Uh, oh, period is supposed. Um. So it has our explanation for. Where did this talk about? And it's. B through. If it's seats on C, I'm sure this through I. I mean, I've actually been involved. Swan. Definitely. Friends fair, hold out to give her. Be heard of, uh, by. Which is true. I would, it's weird. The village board understands. Villages understand. Our benefits are our residents' money. So we don't take that lightly. Basically, we need profits is because they don't have a lot of money. And this year is a good example. We did, uh. A lot of our budget and finance problems that is. The counties who have the problem that is pleased. If you didn't have a home business, that's the problem. So we are. Well aware that we're not, we don't assign away our residents in this group any day. We need to make sure. If you buy services, make sure to all sit home in front of residents and that's why we have. Uh, the second thing I mentioned is we had a company. It'll be always. We promise to be good. We're going to go crazy with that. The suggestion was by him. Sales gathers. Being crazy, strong, iterating, or definitely the most kind of arson made out. We should just. Sales gathers is our museum. And also. We have to start to. Yes. Um, I have to say certainly true. That, uh, the county has our thing, so it's nice to be. There's nothing to do about that. But at the same time. We we have the old standard of the test city. Forget that should have authorized. Home loan against the way that we did it. It's considered. There's no theory and I understand charge gas. Will cross. Oh. So that's. The. Scare. The status are finished and rather than this. You're bringing out that charge for this. With that, other questions are. Um, this on the list. Sure. Especially.
Yeah. Please go. And with tax. The cost. They have extremely. And I'm glad it's funny if it's. It's not. Get through I think. Actually, it's the usual some. And these structure, um, that. You have this where we have, um, a. I will. We're requiring that. River fire which today can go permanent to the village. We have what was the elimination that the fee, um, that's a fifty dollar per day. Uh, and it's a streamlined process for false alarm willing to, um. Lower or increase the total number of false alarms, um, that we counted before we, uh, begin to chart. Easily charged for false alarms in that they have the firing sources to be dispatched. Whether the location that a false alarm has been activated, um, we don't look at that as a punitive effort. Uh, my enemies, but it is absolutely. But we did eliminate the currently eliminated. Um, how was known into the opposite. Straight from awesome.
Thank you.
Any other. And the question is. This obviously. You're unspoken if. There are. All of it if G and the S.
No. Second. Thank you.
Welcome.
First, the hall is, yes, try to be relaxed. Try to be. First, the room. Yeah, first, the room. Yes.
Yes.
We have the most. I. Yeah. Okay, that's. And we should. See, that's the biggest. One is activated. Going just requires. In, uh, second, we did as long as all its dark parts. When it was going to go. It's not new issue for us, but bad. I'll have a. Sure, it's very bigger question.
Thank you for the board. This is a. Mentioned to you. Uh, to then the minimum size. And with the law with requirements be received. Uh, so secondly, you see. Says the news. Says, um. So, uh, it's only the simplest of those that there is no update. Uh, it came to propose a civil yet heard, um, from some of those asking. Uh, if I will need to be perceived, so. Uh, this really didn't come to mind until by the village last summer, um, which was a bit specific. They. And I don't know. They produce her. Law will be our sufficient to accommodate like actions. Uh, while there's a pretty. Right. Sometimes it's. There's a red on, um, with certain sound that. It's approximately fifty. Uh, and depending where in the district, is it getting further seventh? The standards. Square. Uh, right now, we have the minimum with sixty feet amendment. Uh, the intent of this amendment is really to allow disruption in receiving the district. To be more keeping that with law with, um, the same character in the area, not to change. That is just maybe, um, tell we talk about the, uh, listening. Um, the, uh, the art of some of the cities, the area, so that a little bit, uh. Little bit, um, west, mostly in south of. There in. There's no perceive, uh, so we. Do the east. Tax. This is the smallest, uh. It's not something that we. Single parent. Again, different standards, uh, minimum we have a one with sixty feet. And what's that thousand square feet? Uh, and proposed, uh, code amendment takes a fifty feet. We go to the, um, statment where there's a long string of, um. Increasing these standards, um, from the time Zomiko was stopping or that century ago, uh. It's. But so what would this amendment do? Um, this would allow, uh, lots that are currently reviewed. Sort of settle off, um, to subdivide to fifty foot wide lots. Uh, for example, this, uh, Adam Salvin, which we know was then. Our good occasion, take this one with them. Currently, you could build one compound house slot because it's something I would be. Uh, that new house would be likely built, the maximum floor area of fifty one thousand. Square. For this for a few, um, if this amendment was docked, you could then subdivide this two fifty. Us, um. And build two new, you can't. That's that's simple. Uh, just to examine this, I also recently built, um, St. Madison. Uh, this is gonna be a little bit fair with that, right? But next that they mentioned that is a new thing to do. Sometimes the house is a left one. Um, there's only people really want, um, these vertical ones. Uh, here's a. You can see if you can see your side and that. And that's. Uh, another example, this is a gentleman said that house bring a dock. That house was recently sold, this is exactly the white house. Uh, I'm shooting one or two. Uh, we had developers asking us to subdivide this to lots or to, uh, new something they were like lots. Answer was okay. So the after this would be this very similar to. Speaking of this, which you can see is much larger. Uh, absolutely. Uh, so the intent of this one is to allow, uh, not for water to allow developers to subdivide activity. I know, uh, the this is not a part because the extension was the only one. This is actually going to be in there in the future. They said, we still would have the house. So they could still have some. The option. That if they. Uh, and we have no, uh, no impact and won't be done with any city people. There's a lot of questions from, um, probably this can encourage teardowns of. I was something people thought there's no impact on, uh, the existing people off. There's no incentive to tear down people the same thing. However, uh, and zoning commission. That will this, um, and service will talk about it to men. Um, this could potentially incentivize teardowns, subdivision, rebuilds, uh, larger lots where you can currently. The one house was to determine the incentive, the incentive person to tear down an house, build two. Uh, again, this intended to help with the continuing to move prevent the. Uh, gonna get into the weeds just a little bit here because somewhat unusual for the zoning commission sort of. And the zoning commission did very quickly request staff stay to the to the workforce. Their concerns and, uh, encouraged the workforce to take this, take consideration. Wow, maybe for decision, although they permit a, uh, pool. Currently, uh, more than half of the lots, uh, in the zone district just for lot area. Don't be gonna have to house this. If this amendment was passed, the drop, uh, it's six percent with vast majority of lots from lot side and lots of this. Lot with, uh, standard into. Uh, right now, there are twenty five lots in this district that are actually sub divisible to lots and have. Four thousand square feet, uh, area. If this amendment passes, that would increase one or twenty five. With variation, there's only more difficult variations to add initially be months, um, to that potentially subdividing. Um, less of possible, but we get a little bit important to this second, uh, because that's what this may be the chances to do. Uh, zoning commission on the topic hearing and received, um, some. It's more than. I know that, uh, we sent letters to notify, um, the public of this hearing to all realtors and properties in the village. We we will. See district property and what they feel that are good. Um. We received some, but not all. Uh, there was some opposition, um, and some support. Basically, yeah, this only man, this only bringing the. Random. There was some opposition, um, at the hearing, uh, some certainly this was completely the strategy and want to be by this. Because trying to get small. Uh, why are we applying this? Concern about changing the records to be they like the big houses, they're just so small. Just to address that. First of all, the reason this was only the history. It's called. And and second, uh, this was the one district where, uh, change under this. Would result in. The ability to create a lot set and keep it. If I was least of the the draft, so you pay district. Then you would have only new subdivisions and they could significantly. Care about that. That's one is will get we met. Uh, after hearing this public comment, uh, the commission, uh, uh. Was generally supported at some source. This actually just for one safety. Mission that's the. That has only requirements and that's what we need to know differently. Uh, in that. Uh, specifically one group, we this amendment set of isolation and the benefits. Sir, we talk about, um, netism and regulations, uh, they do have, uh, super class office there, which also. In general, to. Uh, we got a bit deeper, uh, into the newly subdivided lots with no subdivisible and. Fourteen thousand. Square. So there are one hundred and thirty eight lots that will become newly subdivided. Uh, if this kind of pass, uh, more than half of the numbers that. There already is divided. Or, uh, they would remain non subdivided, so they're unlikely to be impacted, um, by this, uh, by this. Um, there is enough for the legal information to be sure if there's. We're checking, we had surveys of defendant. Including the certificate. Uh. Forty one lots, really, we said, they said. We'll be subdivided. And out of that forty one lots, you figure then two of us are very unlikely to be impacted because they've already recently been redeveloped. Uh. So what we're really thinking about here is nineteen. So it's. Um, sixteen older homes, so it'd be newly subdivided. Well, any pages, conditions likely already significant. Sure, I post. Also, one condition is significant. Oh, two. So the zoning commission's got a lot of. And concerns that. While they understood the, um. The, uh. But the purpose of this was that could be concerns that might encourage the demolition. These things with the not locals event. She naturally labeled when their session. Uh, you can see those nineteen homes here. Uh, this is the full of the one lot. The links in our. Green, pink, uh, both of this. So we go throughout. In the end, the zoning commission will six to one favor of the resolution that Google, um, and out of concern, certainly incentivize the politicians, especially with these lots. I see it's the benefit. Those nineteen lots that is subdivided, is that balanced, sweet, this. They know the intention between the plan's goals of courage, even about self. And the demolition existing laws, and they recommended that the village will consider. The same serves venue, uh, decision while also considering the fact that six out of the. Uh, did. Who. Um, so motion needs to prove the thresholdness. Have any answer in question? Yes.
Thank you. Um, in. Second, here is a vision. Um. Stop stuff there for the village board. Talk about. And. Fuck, yeah, it's for, so the mission. Um, and we are. I. I thought of this, um. Presentation of. Our picture, it's sort of the. Because is for issue. So is. Maybe or. If, if. On the big act. Um. Well. Look up to where suburbs, other suburbs. Basically, our, you know, our department. Certainly. And this is not, and this is not. It's not. Our issue based for this, and these, the war housing, that is also. Yeah, I think. Make considerations, Brad, as we are continuing to look, status, be, when you have, take. And creating pressures, centers, uh, for preservation. This is something I, and I, I agree with, seeing how this might add. Um, so something we should do, so, um. If you have a neighborhood or. You could go. That's first, but a lot of houses, but most of the buses are. But we should do. I mean, other work members have thoughts. And they don't have to feed a bomb, but, um, and. And if not. You're off. To prove the amendment has resonance, like.
So.
Uh, if they, second, the board.
Let me ball out, yes, let's give you a lot.
Yeah.
Let's give my, yes, let's give him. Yeah, let's improve him.
Yes. Yes.
Her. Can you, well. Uh, if there are any other risks for our. Uh. So. Started, it both, uh. If you want. If we. Go, uh, just very, okay. Ensure to, if both, uh, for the purpose of. Speed line, lining errors.
Boom. Bang.
What's on there? Good, that's a well.
Let me all that. Yes, let's see your laws.
Yeah.
Let's give them a, yeah, let's see, yeah, let's see.
Yes.
Most carriers of books, which are.